Amy, Amy here, are we ready? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call, welcome everyone. I call this meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We will start with a roll call to my right.
Thatcher here.
Morris here.
Harris here.
Hollerwell present.
Okay, let the referee reflect that a former council is present. We would all rise for the invocation and pledge. Congress?
Let's pray together. For this day, we thank you. We recognize that you are our maker and our provider. And we are here today because you have given us life. We pray that we would use the gifts that you have given us as well to honor you and to bless this community for living in this community. We give you thanks and pray that we would be good stewards of all that you have done and given. I pray for great wisdom for these council members as they make decisions and lead our community. I pray for our administration, for all these over here tonight, for law enforcement, for administrative personnel, that all that they do would bring blessings to others and glory to you. And we ask this in Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
On honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, so we're going to move on to number four, which is the proclamations, presentations, and announcements. Tonight, we are very honored to do the proclamation for Child Abuse Awareness Month. At this time, I'm going to ask Randy if he would read the proclamation, just because I'm afraid I'll start coughing in the middle of it.
Whereas, in March 2023, the Northeast Texas Child Advocacy Center will commemorate its 25th anniversary, serving children and families in Northeast Texas since 1998. And whereas, in 2023, the Northeast Texas Child Advocacy Center exceeded interviews of more than 10,800 children that were victims or possible victims of child abuse or neglect. And whereas, child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas, our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Texas and the nation. And whereas, child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims. And whereas, protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas, effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, business, government, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas, communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families and prevent child abuse and neglect. And whereas, we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promoting social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. And whereas, prevention and awareness remain the best defense for children and families when a community works together. And whereas, the impact of abuse and neglect has long-term personal, economic, and social costs, therefore hurting Texas's future. And whereas, the Northeast Texas Child Advocacy Center, Child Protective Services, CASA, foster parents, teachers, law enforcement, and others work to ensure that children in our community have a safe, happy future. Now, therefore, I, Andrea Newsom, Mayor of the City of Windsboro, who here but I'm not here.
It's okay.
Do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Windsboro. And on behalf of the city council, I encourage all citizens to remember to recognize this month by dedicating themselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families. Proclaim this the 14th day of March 2023.
Is there anyone here from the Child Advocacy Center? Could you come on the second one? Please stay in here. If I have to be in it, you have to be in it, okay? Hey, you have a good filter on there, right? So we don't break. I forgot a line. Thank you. It's a true blessing for them to be part of this community. Unfortunately, we have that need. So let's move on to staff reports. Do we have anyone for staff reports? Sure, come on.
Hello.
Thank you.
Y'all are going to be spoiled.
I know.
You'll come bearing gifts, right?
Yeah. It doesn't happen very often.
Charlie's the winning lottery tickets.
I hope people ask me where to get the book.
Yeah. On Amazon.
Amazon, okay.
Google it on Amazon. There is a QR code that comes from posters around town and then you QR code and you go to it.
Oh, okay.
But Amazon. Good question.
Aren't there copies at Modern Country also?
There are two copies there. They're going quick, but I don't know how long these are going to be there.
Good.
I did have a few, but they're gifts, so, well, you guys have yours, your gifts, and people did gifts, but everybody else is going to have to buy theirs. Okay, I do have a few copies that have gone way on the table out there if you want them. These are from the Northeast Texas Tourism Council. I did not get these out to you at the end of last year, and I just realized that last week whenever we had our meeting. We are right here in the map. Of course, down here at the bottom. Yes. So this is an opportunity for us as being a member of the Northeast Texas Tourism Council that we can be a part of the map. They don't have enough spaces for everybody, so it's kind of first come, first served kind of thing. But for $600, we're able to get on the map. As you see, we have a star also from Windsboro is on the front. So only those that are on the map get a star. Cool. And there's about 25,000 of these that go out. Amazingly enough, they've had to run two runs, so it may be more at this point. The new one will come out in July. As soon as we get that, we'll get another one. But for now, that's yours. So as always, I don't want to just read the report to you. I mean, you guys can do that. But I do want to point out a couple of things that are coming up. April 20th, save the date. That is going to be our 20th anniversary celebration. You guys will be getting your invitations in the mail, so please, we would love for you to be there. Also coming up in May, we're going to be having Imagine the Possibilities Tour. That is a state initiative. They're the ones that pulled that together. The whole purpose of that is to get people into vacant buildings. We don't have a lot of vacant buildings. So ours is going to be a little bit different. We've already had two visits with them, with the state, and we are going to look at folks being able to do a self-guided tour through buildings that we have that are occupied. They've never done it in this capacity like this, so it's, we're kind of doing our own little twist. But it's kind of fun that we have so many.
What's the date?
That will be maybe 11. Make sure you write it. Maybe 11. Yes. That's going to be the same time as Super Shop.
Open Mike 9.
Open Mike 9.
Okay.
All that good stuff. Okay? Let's see. What else do I need to tell you? Oh, okay. So I think it came before you here a couple of months ago, and I said that we are one of the four that's being talked about at the Senate. I mean, the hearings and this stuff right now as we speak. They have not done it yet. They're hoping to be in front of them the end of this month. So we are quickly trying to do 2022 numbers and get that completely finished. They gave us the preliminary of the four cities. And with that, they are also looking at our tax revenue for that district. There is a program that we can purchase, but it's pretty expensive. Most smaller communities don't have that program, but they're doing this for us. They don't have 22 numbers yet, 2022 numbers, but they did 2021's numbers. Our district generated $50,000 to $60,000 in revenue in 2021. On the heels of COVID, that's really not too bad, just for the district. So I'll be anxious to see what that 2022 number will be, and they're just waiting. They said any day they should be getting that. As for the visitors for 2022, guys, we did really good. I'm only hesitating because I know we have media in the audience, and I'll get you a solid number here soon. But we kind of blew the doors off of the numbers that we did last year, and we are already at 29% over what we did. And we don't even have the Art Center numbers included in that yet. I only hesitate to give you a solid number is because the number is so high. I really want to make sure we are giving the right number, because being before the hearings, we don't want somebody to come back and go, oh, you know, you missed a zero. So anyway, guys, that's pretty amazing, because there were a couple events that were a little bit smaller. Art and Wine was a little bit smaller, because of course it rained on Friday. We were, it was cold and it was raining, all that good stuff. But yeah, it looks like we kind of made it to four different capacities. So we're excited about that. Actually, that looks like that's about all that I have. Do you guys have any questions at all about the report?
Is the Christmas in the Park included in those numbers?
No, because it's only stuff that's in the district.
I know.
And I wish if they'd come downtown that we could include that. Or one of the locations that's downtown. Yeah. Because these are only the visitors that come into that district.
Does it include the farmer's market area?
It does. It does.
It'd be nice if they could hold them in the farmer's market area, except for the weather.
So it is. It's really substantial, so there's no telling what happens if we leave the city. But I'm glad you said Christmas, because I totally forgot. Okay, so we've had a snag with the funding that, when we requested in budget season to do holiday decorations, and we were going to do the poles. I think we just had enough money to just do the poles and not the tree. Well, we can't do poles, so we can't do the angels. What's happening is that the poles are being replaced, and as they're being replaced, they're taking out the electricity. This is not just for us. This is all over the place, because evidently it's become a liability for having those on poles. And so they would prefer, I say they, it's what co-electrical places, not just what co-what is that, this is all over the place, it's not just us, are taking down all the decorations off of those poles. So when you see those angels, and you see one, and then nothing, 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 see another one, nothing, nothing, nothing. That's why. Those poles in between have been taken out. So we are on the downhill of that. So we did not order new angels, obviously, because they're kind of going away. But the good news is, we have enough for a tree.
I knew that was coming.
So now, of course, we've got to get that electrical underground. You know, we don't want to put a real tall tree up and then the wind blow it over and it could be electrical. That would really be bad. We don't want to make the front page news, but.
They didn't before July.
And we would have a lot of other things we'd have to answer, too. So, but right now is a really good time. The trees have dropped substantially in price, because the original price, I think, that we talked about was 25,000. Right now, we're down to 14.
Oh, wow.
Y'all, it really, I mean, it just, it's completely, so I've talked with Joey. We've made sure that the forms and everything like that can be stored, it's the right pick, all that good stuff. And we're just waiting for a representative to call us back to make sure that we can get the right tree. But we're looking at 18 to 22 foot.
I'm sorry. I have allergies, y'all.
It's definitely allergic.
I do, I feel it, man. So anyway, I know you guys have a long list of stuff coming up, but do you have any other questions or anything else?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into the public comment section of this meeting. Oh.
Hi, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. No, you're fine.
I'm sorry. I'm with the, I'm Andy Miller. I'm with the Windsboro Farmer's Market.
Yes, ma'am.
And I actually just have an announcement that I wanted to make. The farmer's market is going to be putting in sidewalks. So hopefully, that will be done pretty soon, you know, before market starts. And so we're really excited. We're going to have legitimate sidewalks and ramps, so those will be poured before the first market.
Which is April 1st.
April 1st, yes.
Awesome.
Well, that's not much time.
They will be ADA compliant, or wheelchairs?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
We're super excited about it, and we're real thrilled. I know that it's a need for the market, for sure.
Wonderful news.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else for staff reports? I don't want to overlook anyone. Okay, so if not, at this time, we're going to move into the public comment section of the meeting and hear from those who signed in before the meeting was called to order. And I have Arlene Mayfield. Could you state your name and address, please?
Arlene Mayfield. I live at 700 West Pope Road in Windsboro. I'm here tonight representing Christmas in the Park, to represent the county. It's the annual annual church service surrounding areas. And I'm here to ask if you would waive the fees for the two days that we have.
She's on the agenda.
And why don't we, if you have time, you come back during the, when it's up on the agenda? So that way, if anybody has any questions or anything, they can ask you, if you don't mind staying for a little bit. Okay, we'll call you back. Yes, ma'am.
8.4.
Okay. So now, I don't have anybody else. Angie, did you have anyone else?
No.
Okay. So now, we're going to move into number seven, the consent items. We'll move into 7.1, Consider Resolution 2023-05, Adopting Financial Policies and Procedures for Federal Grant Contracts. Okay, so did everybody have a chance to review all of this? And is there any discussion needed from anybody?
I had some suggested corrections that I've already sent to Angie, and Angie has corrected those corrections. So I'm fine with the way it's been corrected, all of them.
Which item was that?
Actually, there's a correction on item number 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3.
And Angie, you've got those corrections?
Angie has all the corrections.
Madam Mayor, I actually make a motion that we approve all consent items as presented with the changes made by the councilwoman Morris to our city secretary.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any disagree? No? Okay, motion carries. So then we can just skip down to eight? Okay, so let's move on to eight. 8.1, the Sigma update. Mackenzie, do we have an update?
I don't have a speaker on.
Okay, I do have an update, I guess. That's, I think it's common knowledge, so that the permit process they was waiting on from TCEQ, it was approved. They did get the permit and everything like that. So that's all I know. But I know the permit they were waiting on has been approved by TCEQ.
Is that the permit to another power?
That's all I know. I mean, I kind of struggled with even saying that, but that's all I know, that the permit that they had been waiting on for, and I guess had been stating that they needed for the past couple of months from TCEQ, it has been approved and they did get it, so.
It has something to do with their power, you know, money.
Okay. So that's all I know, unfortunately, but I do know the permit was granted, so. If nothing else, then we'll go to 8.2, Consider Fee Waiver Request for the American Legion.
I am not done.
Yeah, I was going to say, you've changed since the last time I saw you.
Yeah, I just lay this back.
Oh.
So I'm the new commander, and we're asking for a waiver of fees.
Could we have your name, name and address, please?
Larry Fleischman, 1536 County Road, 46612.
Okay.
We have a show on the 29th and 30th. I think we've arranged to use the premises for the Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We typically bring in between 600 and 1,000 people. I think the last show was right around 600. 1,000 was when the COVID break started. And we are still a nonprofit charitable organization, and we ask that you wait until the evening show.
Did everybody get a chance to review this request? Do they have any questions?
How many did you say you expect to attend?
Historically, between 600 and 1,000. I would think something like 700.
Do you know how many vendors you'll have already?
No, I don't. We typically have 80 tables, which would be 30 vendors, maybe.
Oh, okay.
Is sales tax generated from the sales that are in there all those days?
I don't believe so. I'm not sure.
And this is your one-year event, right?
We've sometimes done one in Windsboro, one in Quinlan. Probably try to do two in Windsboro, which is.
Well, if you do two in a calendar year, then we are only waiving the fees for one.
We understand that. Madam Mayor, I make the motion that council approve the fee waiver request, waiving the rental fee for the depot for the American Legion for their spring gun show, April 27, 28, 29, and 30.
I'll second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any against?
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay.
Senator, I thought you said depot and motion.
Yes. Wait. Do we need to redo that?
Correct me?
Yeah, maybe. Yeah, maybe.
So I will correct my motion to waive the rental fees for the Civic Center for the American Legion. We want to cram all of all that little beaver into the depot, 700.
Is that an amendment?
That's a correction of my motion.
Is that an amendment?
It's a correction of my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Okay. So the Civic Center, not the depot. We're going to give you a little bigger spot there.
But we could have counted the numbers if it'd been at the depot.
Yeah, we could have, yeah. Okay, so let's see. Let's move on to 8.3, Consider Fee Waiver Request, Beta, Theta.
Sine.
As much as I know that group, that organization, I should be able to just, but I can't, sorry. Do we have anyone from?
They did call before the meeting. They had to come up and weren't able to be here, so they did let us know they weren't going to be able to attend.
Okay.
So that's why you have to turn out.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Has this organization ever done anything like this before? This is new?
Yeah.
Is this, uh...
Now, they've been in the city of Windsboro.
Yeah. Are they a nonprofit?
I don't know. But they're the ones that have done the old Miss Autumn.
The little Miss Autumn pageant for years. Trying to see if I have it.
It just says service organization.
But our waivers, our fee waivers are for nonprofits. What's the date on this?
Yeah, it says the event in September, so.
I would recommend that they come back and come before us to answer questions.
Yeah, because I'm not seeing whether they are or not.
But yeah, but we should move this to next month.
Yeah, I think we just need to move this one. So 8.3, we're going to refer this to the April meeting, so we can find out some additional information. Okay, so let's move on to 8.4, Consider Fee Waiver Request for Pine Street Baptist Church. This is for Christmas in the Park. Now you come on up.
My name is Arlene Mayfield. I live at 700 West Pope Road in Windsboro. And I'm here to represent Christmas in the Park. It's the annual annual church service in some surrounding areas. And I'm here to request the waiver, the waiver to use the Windsboro Civic Center for two days. One is set up July 20th, and the actual event is November 11th.
Okay, so has everybody had a chance to review this request as well? I think y'all have done this for the last couple of years.
About 19.
Oh, 19?
This is our 18 years.
I know when I told my husband, he's just like, how much money do you need? I love it. Lots. I know, I love it, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion, council approve the rental fee waiver request for Pine Street Baptist Church, Christmas in the Park, for the Civic Center.
I'll second that.
All in approval?
Aye.
Any against? No, motion carries. Thank you for coming.
Angie, you want to bring up our tablets?
Yeah.
All that good.
I'm sorry, I try to do these as I go. So I can't run straight, to be honest.
We're stuck on.
Uh-oh.
Angie's got control.
No, just hit your.
Yeah, let me move, but nobody can second.
CJ.
Technology's fine.
Back up again.
Now that's where you have to put the people in your vote.
Okay. So let's move on now to 8.5, Consider Resolution Number 2023-10, Supporting a Memory Century. Consider resolution number 2023-10, supporting a memory center in Wood County. So, did everybody have a chance to review?
Are you gonna make Randy read all that, too?
Um, I'm not. I'm not thinking so.
But I will say, in regards to this, just on a personal, having a family member right now that is suffering from the final stages of Alzheimer's, and having to deal with that with an immediate family member, this is definitely something that would be beneficial.
Great. So, I have a question as to who is behind this, because even the letter that's in here to Congressman Lance Gooden, it's not signed by anybody. I mean, who brought this forward to council? Kinsey?
This, hold on, I bet you it's not. I know that they're based in equipment, so the plans for the memory centers to go with our equipment, you said, the problem with the hospital, actually. I don't think it'll be a part of UTE separate, and they are going after state funding and They're actually asking for this resolution to support all the cities in Wood County and the hospital and several other big organizations. I know that, I believe that the county commissioners are involved in this as well.
As far as signing or putting together a resolution, but the word that you're giving me is "they."
I know, "they."
And so, is, are they part of?
I actually thought these were leaders and none of them.
Are they part of the, of a hospital, or a contractor, or, you know? Who? I go back to who, when, and where, and why.
Yeah, it just says the Memory Health Life Center, but surely there's a board or someone who's.
There is. If y'all want us, let me see if I can figure that out and come back to that one.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna put 8.5 on hold for just a little bit, and then we're gonna move on right now, and we'll come back to 8.5. 8.6, consider approval of the recommendation to amend WEDC bylaws. Mackenzie?
So, it's just doing away with the term limits.
I'm so sorry. I was looking to see who the member cares.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, so, part of the issue that we're having, obviously, is making sure we have the, our board filled for the EDC, and we have some people that have been there for quite a long time. They do a great job in serving on that board, but if we go by the current bylaws, we would have zero board members, because all of them would be at their term limits. And so, the recommendation is that we do away with those term limits.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation by the EDC to amend their bylaws as stated.
I'll second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any against? No, motion carries. Okay, um.
Can I give you an update on the memory center?
Sure. 8.5.
This says, oh, I just lost the numbers. Okay, it says, "A group of local civic and business leaders, including Wood County Hospital Board members, Annette Simkins, and Aura Volenzey, and UT Health subject matter experts." And, what is it? Guided by internationally renowned expert, Dr. John, I'm gonna say this incorrectly, Zeisel, and Sharon Johnson, at the Hartstone Institute.
So, that sounds like it is UT Health and Business.
The very first statement says, well, it just says east of the facilities at UT Health.
I think it's gonna be the next thing, plot land, you know, they've got more third and second.
And part of the creator says UT Health subject matter experts, so I would imagine that it would be UT, but this particular article does not say with certainty.
I remember it being brought up at a county commissioner's court about three or four months ago, and I think it is a collaboration of different healthcare providers. I don't think it's, but it is on UT's property, I believe.
I had attention to work with what the college is, student train, to the open healthcare.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that council approve resolution 2023-10, supporting the memory care center in Wood County.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so let's go, I believe we're at 8.7. No correction.
Was there a vote on 8.6?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, when we were reading, sorry.
We proved it.
Thank you.
So, we're on 8.7, right? Everybody wasn't, okay. Okay, so this is the WEDC initiative application approval. This has to do with Coyote Smoke. Did everyone get a chance to review this as well?
It doesn't give much information. It's in the amount of $15,000, but what was that $15,000 for?
It was a cash grant. It was just strictly a cash grant, and there were no limitations placed on it.
No, they're building a whole building, so I'm sure it's gonna go toward that.
Well, part of that was facade, wasn't it?
There was an additional 12-5 that was granted for facade, but that, that particular incentive did not require council approval, so that's why it's not in your packet, but yes.
I guess I've only been seeing the facade grants that have had a match to it for any kind of repairs or buildings and so forth in the past with, with WEDC, and this just says, "We're giving you $15,000. Thank you for coming here," and it's in Franklin County, you know, but.
It's similar to what was authorized for some of the other Zs. They received the same business grant, just in a different dollar amount.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the $15,000 cash grant by EDC for Coyote Smoke as presented.
Second.
All in approval?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, 8.8 is the Franklin County Budget. Did everybody get a chance to review this? Do we need to, any discussion?
Kinsey, can you just kind of explain the, this one?
Franklin County Budget. It basically just gives you all the option to object to it if you wish to, but it requires passing a resolution if you, if you want to object to anything.
It's an annual thing that's done every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that the council approve the Department of County appraisal district budget as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any against? No? Okay, motion carries.
Mayor, as you move on to the next one, I just wanted to let council know, too, that we, I've learned since serving as the EDC role that grant, business grants, like the ones that you just approved for Coyote Smoke, require, too, what they call readings. So, you're, this is the first one. It'll have to go on again for the next meeting, so y'all see it again. It's just a formality within the EDC laws. So, we'll see it again next month.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to 8.9. Consider resolution number 2023-909, suspending effective date of increase in connection with a statement of intent to increase rates filed by CenterPoint Energy. Did everybody get a chance to review this?
Could you just give a summary? Okay.
The bottom line for residential customers is gonna be an increase to $2.92 per month. General service indicated as small will be an increase of $4.78 a month, and large volume will be an increase of $24.12 per month.
Do we have any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that council approve resolution 2023-09, suspending the effective date of increase in connection with a statement of intent to increase rates filed by CenterPoint Energy.
I'll second.
Okay, we have first and a second. All in approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
It's cutting into that Social Security raise I got.
Yeah, can we object to that part?
Really? Now, we're gonna go into 8.10. Consider approval of construction award for general obligation bond contract RFQ 01-0110 2022, the Animal Shelter Improvement Project. Mackenzie, just wanna put a brief little summary out there?
So, because of the nature of this project and being pretty specific, we, there were only three people that responded at all to this request for proposal, and only one actually submitted a bid, so that made the selection process relatively easy. I mean, they did have some quality work. They didn't have a lot. CJ sat in on part of the scoring committee also, and what they did looked like it was quality work. I think we are also having consulting, is that what you would call it, with another gentleman who frankly would be out of the city's budget, but he's agreed to kind of be a sounding board for us when we have questions. He's very experienced in doing larger projects, and so that's kind of the direction we're going right now. It will require to, if we don't, this is a engineer, architect, and as-built company, so that's convenient for us in this project. We don't have to use their as-built. We do have the option to go out, and we actually have met with other contractors just to come and put their eyes on it, and so once we get to that point, that'll come back to you all. This is just for the architect, engineering piece of it.
Did they show some examples of their works?
They did. Yes, ma'am. They did. They did. The one that sticks out in my mind was the Ag Barnes, which are huge facilities in Ennis, at the Ennis High Schools. Do you remember, CJ, some of the other projects that they're?
They had a vet clinic, too, but I can't remember where it was, 'cause to me, the vet clinic is probably more than Ag Barn, 'cause I remember thinking, "That's completely different." But the vet clinic was, is very similar, and I just don't remember where it was.
In this agreement, it mentioned that there would be a schematic design presented in March, which is this month, as you know. Was there one presented when you met with them, or?
No, they're not gonna do that till we sign the contract.
Right, okay. And on the contract, my one concern right off is that the agreement is, is dated the 17th day of January, and I have a real problem with an agreement that's dated before council approval, so please make sure that that date is corrected.
Yes, ma'am.
Does it also include an office area for the staff? And will that be inside the, the whole building?
That's. It will be inside. I mean, it's yet to be determined, but it, it will be onsite, not like they had to do for a while.
Right.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that council approve the construction award for general obligation bond contract RFQ 01-0110 2022, for the Animal Shelter Improvement Project, with one plastered strong, with the note of change. The agreement is now made as of the 14th of March, 2023.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any against? Okay, motion carries. Excuse me.
Now, we're ready for 8.999.
Okay, 8.11. Consider resolution number 2023-11, authorizing application to the Texas Smart Buy System.
Madam Mayor, this is a, if I remember correctly, this is just a cooperative purchasing system that local governments and schools can use, and it would be in our vision to join that.
So, I, I have a question, Randy. Do you, do you recall when, a few years back, you were council, and we, we also had something similar to this, for purchasing? Is this the same thing, or is it?
I think so. Smart Buy capital, you ever so often, that basically have to make sure you're still a city.
'Cause I tried to find some of my documents on when we approved this, years back, and I couldn't find them right away, but at least it gives us the opportunity. But there is a, there is an annual free, annual fee for participation in this program, but it doesn't say what the fee is. It says, "Whereas the city of Windsboro acknowledges its obligation to pay annual participation fees established by the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts." So, kind of a blank slate.
Request to be added.
Actually, the comptroller, the comptroller screen, they're all here. This is because the police department has to order hospital kits for the screen, and in order to get those, now, we have to go through this program, because the comptroller said so.
Oh, wow.
We can, we can go get them up in Austin, that's our alternative.
It's kind of an offset, isn't it? Whatever it costs.
Yeah.
But our hands are tied. I haven't found an alternative route.
All righty, then.
Okay.
I don't know how many kids they order annually, but it's possible.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 2023-11, authorizing application to the Texas Smart Buy System.
Second.
Okay, all in approval?
Aye.
Any disagree? No, motion carries. Okay, so, at this time, we will be moving into executive session at 6:19 PM. So, if we could ask the chambers to be cleared, please. So if we could ask the chambers to be cleared, please.